Standing for a moment of silence.
It shows inappropriate.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. Okay. Approval of the agenda, questions? If not, so I make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as stated. Someone second.
I'll second it.
No favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the bills from August. I have one here from the lawn care, total lawn care that was paid out at sixty five hundred and seventy seven dollars for the P rock in the park. Uh, some of the work done was on seven twenty nine, some work done on eight two, and some work done on eight four. They sent the bill on eight one, but yet it has already been paid and uh it's not on our August bills or July bills. So I was wondering how this got done.
Um, you approved it at an emergency when Sarah called you.
And I but I don't remember signing that check. I said that last time. I don't.
The check number, I'll pull it up for you.
Uh seventeen five eleven.
And on which date was it? The check? The date of the check?
Oh, uh eight, uh eight eight. So I mean, even if it would have got paid that soon, it should be on the August uh bills here, and it's still not on here. It's a sixty five hundred and seventy seven dollar expenditure. That that so far has not been approved, right? Wasn't approved in July, and it hasn't been approved, and it isn't on here tonight. Do we approve it tonight?
I would suppose so.
I mean, the check was rolled out on eight eight. When was our comp meeting in August?
Oh, it's probably like the twelfth or the.
Fifteenth, probably.
Or was.
On the eighth. So I looked for that check, but I don't remember signing it because of that large amount. But again, um, we're paying August bills tonight. So should we add it to it?
I would think so.
All right, that addition then of sixty five hundred and seventy seven dollars and sixty one cents. Any other questions on the bills? If not, so may I make a motion to approve them?
I'm motion approve.
Someone second. Long favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh approval of the minutes from the July eighth meeting addition corrections.
Did you find the check?
Yeah, Robert, here's this.
Pardon?
The check that your question while signing.
Yeah. Oh, I don't remember that large amount of check there. So like it, like I said, it wasn't on our bills. So and it come, they come, the bill date was August first. Right here, the bill date from August first. But yeah, they have, they done work on August second and August fourth.
So I think what they did was they dropped off rock that first day. The second day they moved some of it, and then they came back because I called them and said, we need, you need to move more and you need to do whatever. So I did call them back one other time to come back and fix stuff.
They aren't coming back anymore to pick up what they left.
I I don't know. Probably, I mean, if we want them to, they can, but either that or.
Well, since we don't have any individual to take care of business, I mean, you pay sixty five hundred and seventy seven dollars to a company there. I think they should do the job right, just saying.
I think so, yeah.
Anyway, we're.
It wasn't, that was the material included, just so you know, it wasn't just.
Yeah, I know.
That would have been a lot in labor. And you know, there were a couple of young guys that were out there doing it and if some stuff could have been done better, I will agree.
We got seventy one yards of rock at forty seven dollars a yard.
Yeah, I call, we called everywhere.
I got rock in May for the gas station from Johnson aggregates, and I think it was like twenty four yards, and it was only like four hundred dollars, four hundred and twelve bucks.
Was it clean P rock?
Yep, absolutely.
Why didn't you, maybe you should have told me that when I
I didn't know.
Called about that.
Didn't know we were gonna get that extensive.
Wow.
The worst part of it is we spent this kind of money and put it down on mulch that had weeds growing in it. And guess what's coming through the P rock?
Well, okay, we talked about this. I didn't have time. I was just didn't have time to pull all the weeds.
Well, I mean, there should have been a mat put down. A mat or or something because we just dumped on a a lot of P rock on top of uh mulch that's gonna bear weeds all the time. So I don't know how we're gonna do that now. Uh, it's an after the fact now, but I mean, yeah, I know we were pressed for time, but they being in this business should have known that there should have been some kind of mat put down.
You're probably right.
That uh just to suppress the weeds because now we're just gonna have them coming through our three thousand dollars worth of P rock, thirty three hundred dollars worth of P rock.
Is there a way to note that? So when we do have to do that again, we can make sure that we address that when we call whoever is.
I well.
Uh, just common sense. You don't put P rock on stuff that's growing.
But obviously, we can't rely on the common sense of people who are in the industry right now. So maybe.
You know, I'm included in that. So because.
Well, for our community comment, we can because there was.
Well, we're not, we're not at that spot yet.
Think so, but I can speak.
We, you know, we always run meetings so community comment only, so.
So we can get back to that.
Can be.
We're on the approval of the minutes right now. Any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, so may I make a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Someone second.
Second option.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Um, resolution twenty two or twenty twenty two dash eleven, increased water rates. Everybody's got a copy of that. Discussion about it. I mean, we talked about it at our uh budget meeting a little bit, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we decided to do it, so.
Yeah, it's, we gotta do it because we're falling behind, lagging behind in it.
This is the what we decided upon, right? Because it essentially only went up.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion for resolution twenty twenty two eleven. Increased water rates.
Ron made a motion, someone second.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Um, then we got uh the twenty twenty two dash twelve twenty three budget. Um. We've got some notes here. We were trying to go up zero percent, right? And we, um, I think Tom talked to Ashny about uh trying to get that to zero. We had to take away thousand dollars out of the clerk's budget, or ten thousand, excuse me, ten thousand out of streets and ten thousand out of parks to get that thirty thousand removed. So we have zero increase in taxes. I don't have a problem taking some from the clerk's area and the parks, but can we use money in the account to buy down taxes, you know, so we can still put, to me, keeping money in our streets is very important. So can we just, can we keep that in there, but we just take it out of the general budget and transfer it in there right now?
I don't know if we can, I don't. Out of streets, and then when they, we run over on the streets, we can just take money out of the the, what we got in to pay for it.
Have a hundred and eighty six thousand, two hundred and fifty nine dollars and ten cents in future improvements in our streets.
Yeah, I know, um. We got the money in there, and you know, I guess with that kind of money, I'm just looking at seal coating because yeah, uh, we haven't got our black topping done this year and.
No, it's gonna be pricey next year. Yeah, it, because we ain't gonna do anything with holiday, I'm gonna bring it up later, but we ain't gonna do anything with hot holidays, we have one thing.
And you know, I don't know if Tom could make it if we'd maybe put a couple of these on hold.
Oh, yeah, we could do that.
We could get some input from Tom.
Yeah.
Because he's the one that kind of analyzed the budget there and threw it all together at the budget meeting. So maybe.
When we said we'd take it out future improvements, and that's where you're taking it out of.
Yeah.
These are moments.
We can set the budget at the one percent. And then at the, when we have to set ours in December, then we can drop it down to one, which will give us time to move numbers or or to zero, or to zero. We just can't.
We can't go up.
Yeah, we can't go up. I mean, yeah.
So we don't have to get it down to zero tonight. What was it in place to get it to zero?
Robert, when we were on schedule, when we seal coated, it was like a quadrant of town, like, wasn't it like a fourth of town or?
We had a couple of different plans. We didn't do some of this area up here that had newer streets, and then we didn't do those newer streets, you know, your street.
Yeah.
This one. But then the last time, I think we did the whole, the whole town, the whole town got done.
And how many years ago was that?
Well, that's gotta be almost five now, right?
Or at least four, probably, yeah.
Well, whatever it was, we can probably raise it up by what, thirty percent?
Oh, probably, you know, and it wasn't at eighty thousand dollars.
That's what I was thinking.
So you know, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a hundred, you'll have a hundred thousand dollar plus bill there next time.
Probably a hundred, five hundred and tens.
An auditor question to see if we can move it from general into, I don't know.
I would think we could, but maybe you can check with.
I just feel that this year, like I said, that's that meeting that, you know, we should do our darnedest to probably go up zero. For the townspeople and everybody.
In conjunction, I mean, you know, in conjunction with the raising our rates just a little bit.
Yeah. So again, maybe we can uh.
Let's table that till.
Well, we, we have to do it.
Now, or tonight, though, I mean.
We can, we can wait, we can wait till Tom gets here.
Yeah.
And if he doesn't get here, then we'll do it after.
And, and yeah, because we can stay at one percent and then in December go down to zero because we, right now, we're planning seventy five thousand in future improvements, plus we have that hundred and hundred and eighty six thousand in future improvements in streets. So we'll have, you know, two eighty, yeah.
We have, yeah, we have the money available, so.
Yeah.
All right.
You might have been thinking about it too and have somewhere input.
So would you just put this on the side yet, maybe give it opportunity for Tom to maybe show up yet by the end of the evening?
Yep.
All right. So we did the tax, that would be the tax, I'll be one percent. So we're gonna just put all that on hold. I guess at the budget meeting, we didn't talk anything about any raises. Um, right, we didn't.
To be honest with you, I looked, we never did approve raises last year. Because I was looking to see what we did last year, but we never approved them. So just enough why I.
Okay, well, I.
That means like Brian and Ashley that we would not, and Bob, so.
I guess maybe we can just leave that one along with the sell the one.
Okay.
See if we can get back from uh see if Tom will get back at time.
Sure.
In time. All right, um. This is going fast. You're gonna like this meeting, Ron.
Yeah.
I make the motion.
Not yet, Ron, not yet.
Now we're down to community comment. Anybody?
How much was hauled in to rock? Many tons?
Um.
Seventy one yards.
We had seventy one yards hauled in, seventy one yards of forty seven dollars a yard or thirty three hundred and thirty seven dollars was the P rock charge.
Thirty three hundred?
Thirty three, thirty seven. Did it sell by the yard or the ton?
By the ton.
But they charged by the yard?
Well, probably because they're a landscaper.
So she called Pete Forie. They went to their company or where they normally get their stuff. They didn't have any. She called Pete Forie. They said that they were only using it for their own projects right now. Then she called around. There was another place that was eighty seven dollars a yard. And I said, that's not happening. And so then she said, but then she called um, Forie again, and they said, I think we have some money for you to to go through. And that's what they did. And it was the same price that they normally use.
Wonder where they got it?
I don't know. I can always call and ask him.
No, it doesn't matter.
Who spearheaded the project?
Well, we approved this getting fall protection a couple of years ago. Nobody spearheaded the project. It was brought to our attention that things look like crap. We had this big thing happening at the church. I called Robert. I didn't do this all on my own. Okay, trying to figure this out. Trying to just make the park look better because we didn't have the time. This was like on a Thursday. A Wednesday, was it a Wednesday? It was like a Wednesday or a Thursday, and this cardinal was coming that Sunday. Okay, so we were trying to make the park look better because there were so many weeds. I didn't personally have the time. I'm going to grad school. I work full time. I didn't have time to do it. Okay. So.
Who called all the contractors?
There was not all the contractors. There was landscape, and I talked to Robert before I did it.
And all the other contractors, but okay, so.
There wasn't several, so.
Oh, I thought that was a plan to go to multiples. But at any rate, yeah, the, that was a short time span there. If only you'd had someone that would have said like earlier in the year, say like May or June, hey, park looks like crap. Let's get it fixed up and also P rock it.
Is that, yeah, you're right.
But wait. You know a guy that did that. That's when the whole thing started about me hauling rock.
This has nothing to do with.
It does.
No, it doesn't. I called the, oh my gosh.
Specifically.
Okay, I called a landscaping company because I was gonna get mulch, okay? And then it was brought to my attention that we did P rock down there. Okay, so I called and said, actually, let's not do mulch because we're just gonna have to do it again. Let's do P rock. And my P rock brain thought that would make the weeds not come up as quickly. I didn't have the resources, the time, or whatever. And to, I did not even think about you hauling P rock.
So you're missing the point here, sorry. And I'm not directly giving you.
Okay, well, you know, you're asking who spearheaded it. You know I'm the one who called, so.
I know.
And I screwed stuff up, so. It was just me.
More than just you involved.
Well, I asked.
He called me and asked me, and you called the lawyer, right?
Yeah.
Told him the situation, and he said it, 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 it constituted an emergency?
It constituted um weed, it's fall protection liability. It was taking care of weeds. We approved doing both parks. When we did the blue and green one, I let separately each council member know what was happening. And um, let Ashley know because she'd have to pay. So that's just what I did. I was trying to make, there was gonna be people here, there was gonna be cameras here. I didn't want the park. This, this is a big deal that this guy was coming.
I know, and I've heard for a long time that the park is really crappy from the daycare. My kids go there every day. So that's what I was trying to do the beginning of this summer here, was gonna fix the park up along with our city employee. We were gonna make it look nice. We were gonna actually take all the shit out, throw in the weeds.
I wasn't aware of that, no.
And then I uh even was gonna bring a load of P rock home for free. So Jake asked our city clerk to please set up an account up to Johnson Brothers. And then that's when that whole thing got started. Oh, we're gonna get sued because we hauled in a couple loads of rock. Yeah, it takes money to sue. People that talk about suing generally don't have money. Nobody's gonna sue because they didn't get to come to Good Time and haul a whole five loads of rock. It isn't worth their time or their effort.
I don't think it would be necessarily an individual suing us. It would just be getting in trouble with, I don't know, auditors or something like that, so.
Well, that's what the thing before was when the lawyer was here talking about get sued because I couldn't haul it. Well, see, now we would have had this done. It wouldn't have been an emergency. It would have been done correctly. It would have been finished. It wouldn't have had all the black orders ripped up from the Bobcat running into it, left like a mess. Wouldn't have had the P rock dumped all over the grass and left. So why would anybody pay for that kind of service? That's what I'm wondering. I mean, this all would have been done if people would have just forgot their own individual priorities, let people fix up the park correctly and had it done for, I figure about two grand, and I'm thinking I'm figuring extra rock than what was actually provided. So.
Well, this is a plan you had that you never expressed to any of us council.
I did, that's, I did.
To me?
And that's when that.
At a council meeting?
That's when I came up about hauling rock.
But did you come to a council meeting and say this to us that you wanted to do this?
No, I believe I talked to the city man, who said, who has the authority to put some rock in places in need, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, that's why.
He never brought that to our attention either, so. That would have been a great plan, and it would have worked out great, and I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
I think he quit and made, and but anyway, that's besides the point. We lost one of the best city mans ever, and that's what led to all this in a hurry because we don't have anybody on board.
You had to, had people with common sense who wanted to fix it up correctly, and people made an issue out of it. So technically, that sixty five hundred dollars is over seven grand when you figure in the lawyer bills for the lawyer calls. Seeing if we could really haul rock in because people have an issue with me hauling rock in. Because, you know, you know. So you, you might as well figure that bill at seven grand plus. And you could have had it all finished for about two. People with common sense to do the job right, because yeah, it's a mess. I mean, it's, it's a disgrace. What are you gonna do with it now? You're gonna have a hard time salvaging any rock off there because by the time you start cleaning the rock off, you're gonna be into the mulch. It's gonna be off the grass. It is a mess. The grass is gonna keep growing, the weeds are gonna keep growing because that mulch has turned to dirt. I mean, they're already through there. Bob goes around lawnmower, there's P rock flying all over, there's P rock all over the place. I mean, they couldn't even fix what they lifted up with the Bobcat. I mean, it is a disgrace. It is a waste of money.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement, Jason. Anybody else under community comment?
Um, there's a letter.
Yep. I take it.
There's one in here too that I was asked to read too, so. You got that one?
I take it that their, their billing isn't orderly like everybody else, or what?
Their billing is quarterly, like.
That's what I'm confused about.
They get, they get so, when the January meter, and we read in January for the fourth quarter, that's what he's commenting about.
So we'll read the first week of January like we always do, and they're billed for November or October, November, December. So the last quarter they get billed for, it comes to them in January. Just like everybody else's.
Yeah, but they didn't own the building. It looks like they bought it in November, so November, December should have been a separate billing, right?
Yes.
At the end of the year.
Pro rated for the two months, not three months.
But wasn't that, wasn't that an awful high bill for them, and they weren't even occupying it?
I couldn't tell you what their bill was then.
I thought they said that before, but anyway, they are during February, March, and they get a bill in April now, right? Just like everybody else?
They are billed quarterly, yes.
Yeah, but I mean, are they on schedule like everybody else? Because I think that's what they're asking, right?
Right, the way it looks to me.
I thought they wanted it something different.
They wanna be billed in December for like.
For them two months.
Well, like now, like twenty twenty two, they wanna be billed in twenty twenty two for the end of the year. We don't read till twenty twenty three.
Oh, they wanna end their business year December first.
For their business.
Okay, well, yeah, we uh we don't, we, we read what the first couple of days in January.
Right.
So then October, November, and December are read and generally second, third, or fourth and billed out. So, yeah.
I'll be billed January third, we'd read for twenty, for the last quarter. So January third of twenty three.
And maybe their accounting is it's difficult because they're not showing that expenditure in that previous year.
But they're using essentially the minimums, I think, so they could.
I mean, yeah. Well, they could also pay their bill December thirty first.
Yeah, they could, you could just go by previous now months usage and just write out a check.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
You know, and uh be within what?
Eight months.
Yeah.
One way or another.
Just kind of guesstimate it and prepay it.
Well, they could pay X over two, and then they'd be fine.
So I guess, you know, get back to them and tell them, you know, if they wanna have this done on their business year, that, you know, they're more than welcome to bring it uh a pay estimate for December thirty first.
Yeah.
Well, it's still a matter of your paying December, last quarter's bill, so that goes on your last quarters. Anyway, I would.
Yeah.
Even if you want to check out in January thirtieth.
Well, and I guess, I guess that's why.
I mean, you know, you just got.
But there was there.
In your last year's bill. Yeah, but it shows up in our accounting programs is that you're paying the next fiscal year.
But even, even say their electric bill, their December bill, they're gonna be billed up in January for like, for yes, or anything else. So there's nothing really.
It isn't any different than any other. Their, their gas bill is gonna end up, December bill is gonna be paid in January. So, but I guess if they wanna end that, so they have that business year, they can just kind of guesstimate it and give you a check and get as close as they can get it. And so then, Sarah, you had a letter?
Yeah, so I got contacted by Benjamin Wanderlick, and he just had a concern and wanted to air it out, I guess. And he wrote a letter and signed it. So it says, to the Good Thunder City Council, um, I would like the city council to know that I did not approach Ms. Vicky Hallrick to place a camera in my home. She approached me to put a camera facing my yard, but also the front of city hall so she could track when Ashny, the clerk, is there and when she is not. I told her I would ask my fiancee what she thought. Ms. Hallrick dropped a camera off the next day. I returned it to her and said, no. I would also like to have my name and the name of my fiancee crossed off the petition against Ashny. I feel that I was misinformed by Ms. Hallrick. I would like this read at a city council meeting to clear our name and clear up this matter respectfully, Benjamin Wanderlick and Ashley Kruger. So I don't know, I don't think we need to comment on it. I just thought.
We do. We need to make sure that everybody knows that did not say Mayor Robert Anderson on there. Thank you.
I just read it.
That's right. But everybody on local face base pages will all be talking about the mayor's girlfriend. Let's just, let's just say it all loud. It doesn't say Mayor Robert Anderson.
I thought we were gonna do this at a personnel meeting. Because that's the issue you had last month, right?
Yeah, but we have.
I know.
This was.
I'm just, he's the middle. I don't know what you want me to do about.
I can comment on that, but I will not do it.
Okay.
We will have a personnel committee meeting.
Meeting, and he was gonna read it himself at a meeting. He asked me if I would read it.
Well, we're not gonna discuss it anymore tonight. We'll have.
That's fine. I didn't think we should discuss it, but.
Um, so, all right.
Wrote this to the council.
All right.
I mean, we've had to read icky letters before a council meeting, so.
Um, okay, we're down to uh new business? Uh, we have park equipment that is down by the lagoon for
Oh, yeah.
The fifteen years already, I believe. That is sitting there. Uh, people wanna know.
Didn't we have somebody lined up that was gonna do that?
Jake had my neighbor that was gonna do it. At that time, he was not working. I don't know if he's still interested or not. Um, so.
Is he with a construction company?
No, he, he was just.
I feel like something was.
We made a motion to buy X amount of dollars worth of steel so that person could weld legs on.
Yeah, but I don't know with what happened there, if Jake ever got ahold and got back to him, whatever. But anyway, I'm just saying, nothing's gonna happen this year anymore. Um, our goal is gonna get a city man. I don't know if we are gonna have a city man. But we got that given to us. So we gotta get that put somewhere. You know, I just, if I just remembered it here the other day because I was driving around down there and I seen, and I thought, that's new business. We gotta take care of it. So again, God willing, we'll, we will get a city man and uh we can move forward with some of this stuff because we are gonna get a backlog of problems that are, won't be done. Anybody else with something new, new business? Ron?
Yeah, um. Resident on Hiller Drive wants best quoting. And I called whatever company it was, I got it on. But anyway, uh, we get a dollar a foot. That's the same price the county charges. So right in the ballpark, and now Aaron, he got ahold of me today, and there's another company I called that would do the same thing.
Okay.
And it would end up being a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars, I would guess. We do, it would.
A thousand to fifteen hundred dollars, I would guess. We do, if we do it up by. Aaron's, you know, where Connaught Hiller used to live, we should do it down by Kurt Hanson's too.
I was gonna say, is there other places that we wanna?
Gonna do the whole town. I mean, it's it's late.
Yeah.
No doubt about it, so.
It's been awful dry, I suppose, though.
So wait, if it's okay to do that.
We wanna make a motion to approve up to fifteen hundred dollars to get the dust control done on Hiller Drive.
About the north end of town. What's that?
How about the north end of town? Dusty up there too.
Nobody said none. Usually have it done by end of May. I mean, that's just the way things were. It just, nothing was going. So, uh.
Do we usually do that side of town? I mean, I I always remember like the county took care of one road and we took care of the other, but that's not. Seal coating or the township, excuse me. But do they do the seal coating or not the seal coating, the spraying?
No, we do it.
Yeah, we are. Well, they did it that one year when they were using that gravel road as when this road was closed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
And they did it, yep.
So I mean, then if you did that, you'd be adding what three, six, twelve, uh. Probably fifteen hundred more feet under there if you did from the stop sign all the way up to uh past Adrian Fleming's.
To the limits up there.
We're gonna do that.
Limits more or less.
Yeah, city limits, yep.
I'm thinking if we do that, we should do that, you know.
We have a resident that would like it done now.
It's late in the year, but again.
It could be dry for the next two months.
Two months, absolutely. Yep, you're right.
Blowing all over the place.
I'm making a motion to approve three thousand dollars for dust control on the north and south sides of town.
All right, Jim made it. Someone second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
And WW was this morning, we went, you'll see markings all over the roads where them holes are. That's what took place this morning. We're patching.
Okay.
And uh. There again, I mean, they're gonna get everything located. And that's probably gonna go over what we thought was gonna do because this out here is gonna be pricey.
More than we thought.
That's probably, uh, first off, they'll go down, you gotta have more base there than our side roads and. And uh, and we're going, you can see where the marks are. I mean, there's gotta be thirty, forty foot coming out of there. Cause it, you know, it's lifted up over the curb. And where the handicap ramp comes down, coming this way from the west, they're gonna. Mill that out and make it level with the curb. And I think it was that way originally, but the even before the it broke, the water main broke. So that's gonna be done there in the future and this year yet.
They think they're gonna do it this fall yet?
Yeah, yep. And then Jeff Dahmer is coming tomorrow morning and I had uh questions for him about the intake and the outlet down there on the cur on the. Tile going in the park. Cause I don't know how that all. Comes together now. You know, as far as the intake, what, you know, what we need or what we can run together. Cause we're gonna leave the sixteen in and we're gonna put in twenty four, so. And then the outlet too, if we tie them both together and run them, both of them get across the road at the same time. Cause either way, we gotta go across the road, so. Whether you wanna replace the old piece and just do a bigger one, you know, you probably put in a. A big one. Isn't thirty six on the one side of the property, Robert? I think, or no?
I don't think it's it's whatever was up to that shop and I believe it's twenty four inch.
Down there, yeah.
Yeah, it's cause that was left over from that project. It never ever got hauled out.
Yeah.
So it's it'll be the same besides the one that's there. So we should be able to take your business.
Oh, that's right. You talked about laying an eighteen by an eighteen or whatever it was, but now you're thinking of putting a twenty four next to it.
I mentioned that thirty six going to the south, but we're leaving the other one. And if we put a twenty four there, we should more and. Be able to handle any water that's.
Sure.
Coming there. Um, he brought up Jeff Dominos. He gave a report about everything we gave him for last.
No, I sent him information and I haven't heard any more from him.
Okay, Ron, back to you. I believe right now that's. I got so much stuff written down here, but it's a lot of it's for different meaning. We're waiting. And like I said, there's gonna be more patching because the. In front of the uh post office that broke up by the alley there, so that's gonna be a pretty major and uh. That corner down by the school and then the house, could we do anything down there by the stop sign where the?
That should be fixed.
All we're gonna do on yours is fix the corner. I'm I'm not talking about my, I'm talking. Oh, no, but I mean, I'm telling you what we're gonna do in that corner. We're gonna go around that and then go down uh. Just along the curve. Next to the curb then. Until we decide what's gonna hap- happen with the school, say, if it turns into. A warehouse or whatever, you're gonna have to have a lot better street there probably. Which I don't think's gonna happen, but that's, you gotta keep that in mind. So that's gonna be. Not what we really wanna do as far as going out and taking some of the hump out. But we can do that next year too. I mean, you know, so and hopefully the oil's down by that time too, so maybe the price will be down, but. But otherwise, I say we did different areas that. I picked in a picked a couple more in there that, cause we're gonna seal coat next year. I mean, if they're here, might as well get it uh. Get it done. And hopefully this curb's gonna be in it over here. I can't think of everything. It's gonna be in town this week supposedly, so they'll put that curb in. So it'll be patched over here by.
Oh, Buck's house?
Buck's house.
Yeah.
Okay. We live there in the fifties. Yeah, I know. Ronnie Hiller's house. Zoki house, Zoki house, yeah. Yep, all right. And we're still, we're waiting on bids for that tile line or waiting for Dahmer's engineering before we get bids. Right, yeah, no, I, yeah, yep. And are we gonna try to buy the tile then or? Yep. Save the tax. And the intakes, I would, I mean. Unless he can really come up what we want, maybe just have him bid the tile and the intakes and outlet will be extra. Yeah.
Cause there's how many lengths is down there? Four or three?
Four lengths, yeah.
And there was.
It's been a partial.
Twenty five, thirty feet long, twenty five? Twenty?
I think twenty four or twenty, yeah. I didn't measure it, but I mean, that's what.
And you plan to call sellers about that too, right? Still? Cause he contacted me over the weekend. He ran into me and he said. That he'd been contacted by somebody else trying to get tile pricing for down there, but he hadn't heard from the city yet about it. So. He'd like.
Yeah, yeah.
Fired on.
You haven't talked to anybody yet.
No.
He brought up a a problem there of. Well, we got across the road with an extra pipe and we have to have a catch on the north side of that Chapel Street. And then we're gonna have to have a a check, a catch or a junction there on the south side of Chapel Street. So that's why he's wanted to know if Dahmer should get involved and I go, yeah, we gotta do it right, you know?
You know.
And maybe we, well, no, that wouldn't work. I mean, yeah, we gotta. There's a little work on both sides of that Chapel Street that needs to be taken care of before we can.
Right, might have to call and rap rip rap. So it doesn't, you know, watch things out and stuff too. So I mean, it's just a matter of. Doing it right, so we don't have to do it anytime down the in the future for a long time. So anyway, I'm meeting with him tomorrow morning too.
What time is that?
He was gonna call around nine, if I remember right.
I'll be around tomorrow too, if you want.
Okay, all right, yeah, yeah, I was gonna.
So. That it then?
Yeah.
All right, anybody else with new business? If not, we can move on to zoning permits. Um, questions on them?
We got a couple.
Looked pretty well explained here.
Yeah, one of them is really well explained.
Only question I have is on that one on GT eleven twenty two. They're talking about working by that wetland. Wanna make sure that they're following all the codes they're supposed to. I don't know, they're talking about leveling stuff out. They can't push anything into the wetland and they really can't describe vegetation, so. No, I mean, it's, no, I don't think it was. They were just talking about leveling out. I don't know what they're talking about exactly. They've got a circle drawn and. So I have no problem with what they're doing. I just make sure that they're.
Twenty three feet from the property line that that's a fence there that. They want.
Yeah, you gotta look at all the pictures then.
It's a very detailed. I think they're just trying to get everything in. Trying to think ahead if they started a project and they had.
Yeah, it's.
Might come up.
The circle they've got about eighty feet to level out, goes about halfway into that wetland. So I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned to them to make sure that they talk to somebody that they're. Not doing enough.
How can you uh?
But is it their property?
Excuse me?
Is it their property? It is.
It is a designated wetland.
I don't think so. I I don't know.
I don't think it is, is it?
No. I think we had a. I mean, it's just always been that way even when the railroad was here, you know? I think Dahmer's expressed something about that wetland at one time, probably two years ago that. Yeah, I don't remember what it was though.
Is there wetland vegetation like cattails over this year?
It's all dry, but yeah.
But I mean, are the cattails growing this year? I know it used to grow a lot of cattails over years.
Yeah, it even says about twenty feet from wetland and property line.
You see that? I just saw their circle was drawn into it.
Yeah, she wrote it on there or they wrote it on there.
Three property lines. That one is twenty feet, but that big circle's up on its officer, that one dry.
Yeah.
Fourteen pages.
Page two.
Really, okay. Of their of their picture.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Is there anything in our city ordinance about uh wetlands at all?
It's not that one.
Probably not. That'd be a question more for DNR probably or someone.
Back up.
It's not that one.
What can the DNR deem private property, wetland?
It has more to do with that. I mean, it is. It is what it is. If it's if it's a wetland, if it. It is. Like you can't just fill that in just because you want to.
Yeah, I don't know anything about that.
Well, like Ron said, the railroad tracks ran there. Well, that would've been on this side of the creek though.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, since the fertilizer plant, I got filled in with the tiles, so. Same deal.
Yeah. We already filled some of that in when we ran the tiles through there. Cause that would have been right on the west edge of all that cattails.
Yeah.
So.
That's all grown over again.
Well.
I guess I just wanted to make sure that they noted that they knew there might be some regulations with wetlands that they might wanna check in.
I'm frustrated since she labeled it. You know, this is whatever.
Would they ask us to know that rule or would, I mean, it's in our purpose city limits? So I mean, is that something you bring Blueworth County in or is this?
Is that our responsibility to check into it or hers?
I think it'd be their responsibility because they brought the permit board, but I mean, they could call engineering, call Dahmer's and get an opinion on it.
Well, he's gonna be here tomorrow morning.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll ask him.
Okay.
Yep, write that down, Ron. Remember.
How our work's gonna affect it. Cause we're right there at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions on these? We have four of them, GT nine, GT ten, GT eleven and GT twelve uh. Some of them replacing existing permit on file, no action needed on the last two. Any questions on these? If not, somebody make a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve uh GT nine, ten, eleven and twelve.
Someone a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. You're gonna have a meeting, a Zoom meeting tomorrow?
Yes, Tom and I are meeting with Blueworth County about the. Small city development loan. Tom is gonna come here. We'll just zoom with Kennedy.
Kennedy's interview too?
He's gonna zoom in, yep.
Okay.
It was just easier for everyone to zoom in and get together in person.
So chances are it's delinquent, eleven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. The whole bill to Blueworth County and the city of Good Thunder is thirty eight thousand five hundred and ninety five dollars. So we're about nineteen three a piece of what chances are. The citizens of Good Thunder will probably be picking up out of that loan, right?
If that's what they're gonna discuss, you know, they might just say, hey, we're gonna forgive it and let us know. I don't know what they're gonna say at that meeting.
Well, I mean, one way or another, chances are if you haven't made payments in twenty five months. That's not gonna get caught back up. So the city should prepare themselves for about a nineteen thousand three hundred dollar bill. And uh, you know, that's almost a hundred dollars per household. To clear this up.
And ninety bucks now.
Yeah, and I I guess, you know, if this is settled this year, this wouldn't be involved in our budget. But again, uh, we'd had to do it before one other time. This would just come out of the general and we'd pay it off. And we as a complement of that decision.
We didn't mean to make a bad decision. We sure thought about it for a long time.
Tom Verlich sat right here and he said, this is a damned if we do, damned if we don't.
He was a hundred percent right.
And that's exactly his thoughts that night. And here we are.
We probably talked, I mean. And if you're right, if we would not have done it, then. It would have been, we weren't trying to help out a small business and.
And uh, region nine and uh.
Smith, yeah.
Yeah, are they all involved in this talk tomorrow? Because they have their names, is it on property or gas pump or what?
They have it on. The building, I think, itself.
I don't know that anyone's ever leaned the controller and the pump.
Yeah, but I thought we discussed it one time that they were ahead of the game and they got their name.
They're on.
Secured their loans.
Yeah, but that's that's the building and stuff.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone ever targeted the the controller or the pump.
Does anybody know what is owed to those people?
No idea.
I mean, should you know that going into that meeting tomorrow?
I don't know if I can know that.
I would.
Remember when we were meeting with them, they started coming back and they were very hush hush with us and. The county said our agreement, the city, well, the city's agreement is with Kerry. Um, the city. Has an agreement with the county, but the county doesn't have an agreement with the city with with Kerry. So.
We we are the number one green.
Yes.
The county backed it.
And.
We agreed and we're, yeah, but the county will be paying off their portion.
I I'm sure, yeah.
You know. I guess that could be a question to ask tomorrow. How much is owed to them other people? I mean, if we're gonna pay off debt. Is everybody gonna lose in this or just the citizens of the Good Thunder?
Yeah.
I mean, uh, region nine is by the whole region, right?
No.
And then the other one is what, Smith?
Smith.
Smith, yeah.
Yep.
Southern Minnesota Initiative.
There you go.
Smith.
Yep, so I guess it would be nice knowing going into this who's all owed what. I guess it's only.
Cause at first we didn't think they had any lanes or anything, but then after the fact, we found out, yeah, they they leaned everything.
They secured their loans upfront before they, in fact, they had it secured when we met with them that one day.
And they didn't let us know.
They didn't let us know that, that's right.
That they that they didn't know about any mortgages on the buildings and they had had them at the time, because we pulled a title report and that's how we thought about it.
Wow.
So.
And it just stinks because if we ever were approached again, if the council was ever approached again. This left, you know, a second really bad taste in everybody's mouth, so it just. It stinks because I want the future, if somebody had a small business that they needed help with in a similar situation, I wouldn't wanna be that way, but.
What I'm, what I've. What I'm what I've.
Bad.
What I've heard multiple times is. How can it hold the city eleven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars right now and still be open?
That's the question of the day.
And they owe the county the same, same thing.
I don't understand it at all. And when we talked about Meyer, he said he's never. He's never been in the position. Usually the doors are locked when they default on the law.
Bingo.
Right.
Yep.
Yep. I mean, when we met with Bob Meyer, what, three years ago, he wanted to know then if we. Suspended the payments for six months, if that would help. I told him then it was a sinking ship. Because they they were making no effort. And guess what? It just sunk deeper, deeper and deeper.
Well, and Kennedy messaged me and asked about. Uh, a resolution that you guys passed. Have the past clerk and the mayor sign off on that agreement with the county. And I can't find anything anywhere, so I don't know if there was one, so I don't know if that plays a part of any of this. But Kennedy inquired why there wasn't a resolution. To go into this agreement.
So maybe part of the contract not legal, maybe that's part of the discussion. Just already, I mean, we talked for two years that we're just gonna have to pay it.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it? Well, is there anything else you guys want asked to the county, to Kennedy? Besides how much they owe the other people?
But why can't somebody ask if if the county isn't gonna take their collateral? Why can't the city have it?
I don't know the county has any collateral sign on this note either, and the county's agreement is with.
The city.
Us. Us is the city. And we don't have any collateral as a city against, we have a personal contract with Kerry as a city. We don't have it with the county and we don't have a lien. We didn't know. That we should, you know, do a report and try to lean something before any of this happened. It was all kind of.
It's reforming a goal center. It's not just her.
Well, again, the. The financial statement that was showed to us that night was very inaccurate.
Yep.
Accurate.
Right.
Very inaccurate. If we'd have known that at that time, chances are we would have really rethought the process because it wasn't viable.
Well, and I'm pretty sure you and Tom both asked. This is, you know, all this is everything. All this is accurate. This is what.
And Smith helped them prepare all the documentation.
So we really thought it was. Good to go. It had the county involved. It had.
Yeah.
We were just, you know.
Well, then.
The backer to try and help this business out. But even Bob Meyer said they didn't do any looking to see if there was any liens or anything custody there.
That's right. Smith's kind of tried to promote us to get involved. And uh, yeah, well, this is where it's gotten us.
Yeah, we should have pulled a credit report because then we would have found out all the liens and judgments and then we would have just said we're out.
But we just seems a bad taste to just let them take our money and leave.
It does.
So you spend a little money to try to get something out of it.
Yeah.
That's what happened way back, probably twenty years ago when the car wash was put up. The building stayed here as a car wash. The guy went broke and the city paid twenty five thousand dollars for it.
Yeah.
But it's still there working.
But not no more. He closed it this summer.
That this summer he closed, yeah, but that doesn't mean he ain't got it for sale probably or whatever. Well, I'm just saying, no, that's what back then, I mean, but we had a car wash for all them years.
I mean, at least if the city could take the pump and whatever and sell it.
Yeah.
You know, or the dispenser and sell it. Get something for your time.
Yeah.
That's the whole thing. The law's gotta take care of.
Multiple times and he said it would probably cost us more than we owe. The litigator still might not come out with anything.
But again, you're 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 just giving those people money.
I know.
Right. You're just handing them money.
Promotes fraud. I mean, it was fraud from day one if they didn't disclose their financial statement correctly.
And I wish we could have just, it would have went back on that fact. That the business plan was he, I mean, I remember Tom, you know, he wanted. Business plan and he wanted to know that they had the money to buy gas right off the bat and.
We even told them that night to say, make sure you have like even just a shoebox that all the money from the gas goes back in the shoebox. So when it's time to buy that load of gas, the next time you have it, but guess what? It all went in the till and since we had money in the till, we had money and this is where it's gotten us.
It's just a bad deal.
And I mean, it takes a lot of money or it don't take as much back then. Right now it takes a fortune.
Yeah.
So um.
Well, maybe she'll get some new information tomorrow. We don't know what the discussions even he had. The county would. Isn't calling the loan. They wanna have a meeting to discuss what the options are, what we're gonna do.
Wouldn't like the county have lawyers where that lawyer would be spread out, even the county lawyer would work. Under the county.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
We would have to spend the money on our own lawyer to pursue something.
Yeah, I could see.
We're both involved.
That's right.
No, but because the county says they don't have an agreement with us.
It's us and the county.
Got a lawyer, obviously.
The county can dissipate nineteen thousand three hundred dollars over.
Over how many? Yeah.
Is it even gonna cost anybody a dollar?
We have two hundred and twenty five meters that it's gonna go to.
I mean, is there nineteen thousand people in the Blueworth County?
Oh, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because man, it was like thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Like sixty thousand.
So it's gonna cost seven people fifty cents.
For that.
And it's gonna cost us. Almost a hundred dollars a household.
It's in front of lawyer, whoever is the head, the front of lawyer. That lawyer be dispersed amongst everybody. That would take that way down and at least the city maybe could get something for their trouble.
County.
There would be one other thing looming. That I don't know if they closed their tank properly. But um.
And I thought that super pack, they had to have that removed in twenty twenty two, that tank.
Well, they only got X amount of time unless they took proper. Procedure when they did not get any more gas. If they did anything right, they could have bought themselves five years. Did they do any of that right? I have no idea. So there's gonna be a bill down there if that tanks had to come out of the ground that. Since we're involved now, would anybody want us to be more involved? Cause we already have and and best. We're invested in it or invested in it already. So I mean, would it be better off just to write it off as quickly as possible so they can't come back on the city? Anybody think about it that way?
Yeah, and I don't know if they can come back on the city. I mean, we don't have any agreement. I mean, we were just. A facilitator for some equipment, you know.
Yeah.
Well, you can ask Kennedy about that tomorrow. Yeah.
It would be nice to at least the city ends up with some. I don't care if it's five hundred dollars. Owns the whole thing.
The back. I was hoping that we could have taken the pump and the controller. You know, that was Tom should be here. Or whatever, you know.
I assumed that's why they left the old pump out back because they were expecting the new pump to get taken. That's just me because I've sent letters about having.
Well, no, I think that's just the, I'm sorry, but the style they live. I mean. They've been there for three years. They're junk. Take them to Buford. Iron's been the highest it's ever been in the last three years.
Well, and people, people buy those things. For their farms, even if they don't operate, I mean, I'm sure they a farmer could get it operating, but. They have them on their property because they're nostalgic or whatever, but. Robert, get it out of there. What were you seeing about the tanks being closed properly? They, if they don't have fuel running it for so long, they have to be.
If they did not take the correct measures when they did not have gas in them in the first. After the first twelve months or something, they could have taken the correct measures to. Been able to keep them. For five years, I think I I was told this by Zolls when they were putting mine in. That, you know, if they take the right procedure, they could have kept that tank for five years, but if they haven't followed that, that that's gotta come out of the ground.
Super fund doesn't pay for that.
Well, because.
Only though maybe if the dirt's dirty.
Dirt's dirty, right.
If the dirt is dirty.
I just remember him bringing that up. So I didn't, I know all the details of it.
But leaked.
He thought it might come from that.
Then the super fund would help clean up the dirty soil.
Yeah.
But the initial digging out the ground. Because, you know, she always claimed there was five or six hundred gallons in the ground, but you'll never get it because the pipe is this far off the ground. Off the tank and the monitor goes right down to the bottom to detect the water. So your tank is always gonna show product, but you can't get it. That's how that works.
Okay.
The monitor goes right to the bottom, the draw tank. Pipe only goes, it's like two inches above. So you never suck the water into your dispenser and you put it into your gas.
Okay.
But the monitor is laying right down here. And that's why it shows that I might have five hundred gallons in the tank.
Oh, but in reality.
But in reality, you're not gonna get it out unless you manually get a pump and pump it up.
Okay.
With the water.
Three hundred gallons of water.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So um there is something else looming that I hope we won't ever be responsible for.
Well, let's kind of maybe.
I don't know who was responsible for tearing up the tank way back when. The one, the original tank that was in there. I don't, then I say I have no idea, so it.
Yeah. Well, anyway. There's a few questions you can ask tomorrow when you meet with them and uh.
And that's at ten. If you think of any more, maybe just shoot them.
Well, since it's been on the internet, you know, for years, there was originally sixty two thousand dollars worth of gas sold. Through that station. To C F S and they had a judgment for sixty two thousand dollars. Is that judgment still hanging out there or is that paid off?
I think that one is still hanging out there.
And then there was one to Fryburg for eight thousand dollars more. Fryburgs and then she come in and asked Heather originally for the remaining eleven thousand dollars. So when when you're all done, there's eighty one or two thousand dollars that went through that till and you got the cash and never paid off debt. That's what happened. That's the honest to God's truth, unless they did pay off the. Debt to some of those people they owed gas to.
And maybe those people discharged their debt too, you know.
Yeah, they might have just figured it's a dead horse.
Who you might meet with tomorrow?
The county.
The county has.
That and Bob Meyer guy.
I think Bob Meyer and actually it's a couple ladies.
Okay.
So Ashley and Tom will zoom in. Kennedy. Kennedy. And the county will be on the other side.
So Tom will be here?
Yes, Tom's gonna come here.
All right.
So if you have any other questions, shoot them to Tom or Ashley, you know, if you think of something between now and then.
No, I got it. I've been uh working with the sheriff's department on people parking and uh. They can't, you can't, the sheriff's department can't get a hold of bylaws yet or the ordinances. They're stuck in the court system. So is it possible to uh? Get a copy for them?
Yeah, really? Uh, yeah, Nicole has them. Kyle has them. Because I talked to Kyle to make sure and he has them. They're probably.
They're.
They're there. So you want a physical copy?
They're in the system.
Okay.
But he can't get a hold of them.
That's weird. Cause I double checked. I'm like, okay, she said she sent them to you. Do you have them? He's like, oh, yeah, I got them.
And I know Kyle wanted them when he was here yet, so but anyway, uh. I'll come in tomorrow and see if we can't get that. Out too.
Well, and you know, just speaking of that, we should probably. Before the snow flies. Do a little drive around again. Cause I've gotten some complaints just about like. Maybe some new ones. I don't know. So we'll have to do that. Maybe day this week. You guys okay with that again?
Well, that I got that under unfinished business here. Um.
Okay.
I guess we're done with our Zoom meeting and how we explain to our citizens of Good Thunder what it may cost them per person or per. Household or water meter, no, it's not going on your water bill. But that's, you know, but again. That's why we have some money. We will be probably paying that out of our general budget. It's just uh to make it, it's gone.
Well, it's it's to make people kind of think about. You know, when you put it in the terms of. You know, that's a, that's essentially a hundred dollars from every taxpayer in the city.
Yeah.
But that's what's paying it off.
Yep.
Question in perspective.
All right. Uh, we're down to unfinished business. Good Thunder School. Anybody hear anything?
Um, I talked to Mr. Anderson really quick. Ashley had emailed him about what he, what he thought. And basically it was. That they wanted to offer. You know, the the whole thing with the school for a low amount or the cost or whatever for the city to take it over. But when a third party gets involved.
But they never offered us that before they put the sign up. Right? They never come here and wanted a deadline to say, hey, you guys wanted or not, we're gonna put a realty sign on it, right?
I think, I think you contacted them when they put the realty sign up, right? And they said it was still an option for Good Thunder, but I think they just wanted the city to be able to have it and use it. On, but on May twelfth, I talked to Danny Anderson and he said it was still available to the city. Yeah. And thus this whole time, we've been open with Danny Anderson that the city, if they took it over, would be working with somebody to make it viable for the city. We've been open and honest since day one with them about that. I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying that when they, I think when they looked at, when the school board looked at it as making money. For a third party, that maybe wasn't what they wanted. And then now in light of probably the sale of the Minnesota Lake School. For whatever amount, maybe that's not. An option, so.
But they never ever came to us and say, hey, you need to get off the fence. Yes or no? You know, and then we had a meeting to discuss it and then Drummer showed up and said how great a building it still is and everything. So um. Where's it at now then?
And I've talked to Mike twice since then and he he still is of the understanding that if the city picks it up, he's still a partner with the city. And he's still gonna provide us what he said he would. He actually offered them twenty five thousand and they wouldn't even take the offer in.
The realtor called them the very next day. Right away.
Yep, called me too.
And uh they were excited because, you know, their percentage on two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever that listed for. You know, would add up quite a little.
Sure.
You know, so again, um.
The thing is, they came here three years before that school was built and said that you, we want you guys to have it. They didn't say under these conditions.
I, that maybe it was an assumption. I don't know.
I I don't know, but I mean. We would always had to work with somebody. We we told them we're meeting with Scott. We took him through there. They opened it up. We told them we're having a meeting to discuss it. We've been transparent. If we still want to take it and we want to sign it over or sell to a third party to develop it. That's good for our community.
That's right.
That's tax dollars, that's just housing, it's whatever it is. But he's excited still about it.
We we got input from people that night stating they didn't want any city dollars invested, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, I talked to Mike one time, once or twice after that too, and he says. We can, you know, we, it can come to the city and he says in the same, in the same meeting, it it can be back to him. And if that's.
Close twice, right, in one meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Yep. I mean, to me, having that community center is essential to this town.
Yeah.
And if, if we we've all come to the conclusion, we can't own it. We can't justify owning it. But if we could partner with somebody and it doesn't cost us nothing to partner. I I I don't see how we can go wrong.
Yeah, and Mike said even if they would have taken this twenty five thousand dollar offer, he would have still gave us the same thing. He was still at a community center. And there would have been some paid events, like he talked about improving pickleball courts or whatever, but uh. He's excited about working with us.
And the thing of it is, one citizen said, well, do you think Robert, he's really just gonna give it? No, the idea of having a lifetime lease or a twenty five year lease is that. If there's no pickleball environment or no community involvement, that at least for the next X amount of years. He can't close the gym down and put a garage door opener in it and run stuff in it.
Yeah.
We would have it for X amount of years. That was the point I was trying to make that.
Right.
And he sounds like he wanted the city there because then it would be a presence there throughout the day. So. I mean, if maybe it boils down to having a, as another, like a quick meeting and inviting. Somebody.
Well, we'd have to have the school board and Mike and us would have to meet together and say, listen, you guys came here. When they were trying to sell that whole school. You know, they came before and they never, there wasn't all these stipulations of what you can and can't do. There was rumors that you can't have a charter school and it's the only thing I ever heard.
That's right, yeah.
And I expressed to Dan Anderson, I talked to him, I said, I have multiple meetings, recorded, video, audio, everything of you guys saying it's a dollar. And then you said, okay, it's gonna be closing costs, which is understandable, reasonable, we get it. You guys, we were transparent with every meeting we had, who was coming in, what was what we were planning to do. We never hid anything from them. If the city decides they want to buy it for closing costs, what if the city decides to do with it afterwards? Unless it's in the contract, they can't say anything about it. Same thing with that house. Well, we don't have. Not in the contract, you can't, you don't have a say in what we do with it. Yeah, and we don't have a contract or a purchase agreement.
But what happens now that it's been listed and now it's kind of in the realtor's hands? What happens now?
But it expires, the listing expires. I don't know if they gave them a three month, six month, a year. I don't know.
When I talked to Dan Anderson, because it was listed, I said, he said the city still has first. Offer at the closing cost rate. That was on May twelfth. Record it. Have him record it, saying that. So. When the realtor called me, he said, you guys don't have an agreement with the school board. Hey, we don't have an agreement with the school board, but we have a verbal contract or a verbal communication with them saying that. And if the city was to take over the school and sell it to Drummer and Drummer puts houses in there, how does that not benefit the school? Kids come there.
Great.
It benefits everybody. So the school board and then they save that money on devil. So they should be happy whenever the city decides. That'd be greedy.
But if somebody came in with two hundred thousand dollars, it could be two hundred thousand dollars they have too.
Yeah, that's true.
But again. We haven't reneged on anything. Um, it'd be nice that we could see if we can honor that. For closing costs.
Right.
You know, so I guess we're gonna have to have a meeting here and. And and, you know, we can't keep, we gotta have another one in two weeks or sooner needs to be to get moving on this, you know?
Let's just see if the school board can meet us at a special meeting and we'll have Mike Drummer attend and we'll just.
I mean, it doesn't have to be every member.
Well, whatever, whatever they feel, but. All of you came here on separate occasions over these multiple years and and said you guys got first right of the building for a dollar.
Yep.
And that was closing costs, which is fine, whatever that is.
Yeah.
But that's kind of how they sold that to a bunch of voters too, you know, you know?
So anyway, um, we'll have to. Just start a meeting in two weeks. Where'd that be? Well, this one's awful small writing over there.
Twenty-six.
The twenty what?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Do we wanna wait that long, or do we wanna have on a week come, tomorrow night or tomorrow night, I mean, Monday, Tuesday?
Words available, when their school board meeting is or?
Their school board meeting is the same night as our meetings.
Cause then?
Yep.
This one?
And the same night as our meetings.
Tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
They have the meetings the same night.
I would myself like to step it up and meet with them next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And get something happening here.
Yeah, and just tell them.
Give them that nineteenth, twentieth, or twenty-first first option, see if they have something.
Fan Mike Drummer?
Yeah, don't you think?
Seven o'clock, five thirty.
I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know.
Maybe we don't wanna waste his time until we.
It is agreement, he does need to be there for the.
Yeah, alright.
And our agreement will be between us and him.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess they'll see if they can meet next week, first couple, three days, and we'll go from there.
What time?
I suppose probably about seven, cause everybody works and, you know, they'd be able to get home and work and be here at seven or whatever.
Yeah, and they seem to make our city council meetings okay, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll see what I can figure out, okay.
But where are you gonna meet them?
Hopefully next.
Monday, Tuesday, where?
Here.
Here, yeah.
With the school board.
Hopefully.
So you're gonna have a couple more tables in?
Or just some members, I mean.
It doesn't have to be all them, cause I'm sure they won't. They won't make the decision that night.
Yeah.
Unless the council's ready to say, hey, we're gonna do this, cause council says that, then they're still gonna have to take the school board and have it at their meeting.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, anything else under school? Um, city maintenance position, we have one applicant. Um, CD, CDL, yes, no?
No.
Uh, see.
And that closed out last Friday.
And.
The only applicant that applied. I'm telling them.
Oh. Was he one that applied one other time?
He's the one that applied after.
The fact?
The after the fact, yes.
Alright.
Oh, yeah.
No class B at all? Yikes. We're gonna be out of time. We're gonna have a ton of leaves on the ground in less than thirty days. Uh, what are we gonna do?
Um, I have Babe Plumbing giving me an estimate for winterizing all of our facilities, start there. So we can. If we're not getting anybody, we need to start contracting it all out.
I suppose. We don't want our. Concession stand to go.
No, no, I mean, uh, the, yeah, there's concession saying, I mean, that that's the toilets, cause the concession stand wasn't even used, right?
Correct, yeah.
So it's just a toilet, and what do they usually close the first of November or what?
Um, I think.
And the. Well, they're heated all winter.
It it is, but it isn't, the kitchen's heated and there's a fan goes to the mechanical room, but it doesn't heat the bathrooms, so.
That's my fans too. Yeah, I bought them. So. Cause they froze up that one time, and then I went to Menards and I seen them, huh, push that heat back there.
Yeah.
Anyway, yeah, so do we have to have a. Closing date when November first?
Probably should.
And then, you know, get them winterized, um. Both of them?
Yeah, cause last year this one, the toilet blew or something.
Broke up, probably didn't get, I'm not sure if it got backed over, I don't know.
There's a broken spring.
Tank was frozen, might have frozen.
And the house is still winterized from last August, so.
Oh, yeah, that house.
Yeah, I think Tom wanted to talk about that house tonight too, but uh, um, I guess maybe we can talk about that, um, then, when we have our next meeting.
We could.
Talk about that a little bit. And uh. I guess this is unfinished business or whatever, the county reached out to Ashley about. County shop, right, a little bit?
Oh, yeah.
So anyway, I called Bob Meyer right away.
Okay.
And offered up our services for the city of Good Thunder. And I said, we're already been working on a lot, or we have a lot. Uh, we could, we can have a well in by the, by winter, we could put you a water silo wherever, and I said, we just met with our uh, our uh. Engineers to expand our lagoon or, and and. Work at more I N I, so I said, we are doing stuff with the infrastructure ready that we could. Have the capabilities of handling your building. You know? And I said, another thing, I heard you were gonna build a new building in Good Thunder. Well, if you just built one on the north edge of town. You could save this money.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're right in the middle.
Dollar property at all?
Pardon?
Does the county pay tax dollars?
No.
That's the only thing I was thinking about, is they're gonna take a thirty-two acre facility. And not paying any tax.
They're not gonna pay any taxes, but you know what? It may bring some people to town at the restaurant at noon hours to eat.
Yeah.
It may bring some people into town and go, hey. I gotta drive out there today and this house is available. I'll buy a house out there.
Well, and if people, you know, if people from Good Thunder. Work there.
That's right.
The biggest plus is maybe we could get some more snowfall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every truck would leave, drop them.
As it stands right now, we're, we're. Up a shit creek in the wintertime, because they quit cloud, it gets dark.
Yeah.
Yep.
All afternoon and night long, you're on your own.
Yeah.
It's like tonight, I almost died, I'd been dead if he wouldn't have drove me to town, cause the ambulance never would have made it in time. Cause it was clear ice.
Uh.
If the state was still running, the thing would have been a hundred percent salt, cause that lady came out here multiple times. It had, I mean, she poured the salt to it.
It was clear as a bone.
We lost service.
But it was a state highway, it was clear.
State highway, that road was cleared, that was, that's what they do, they have to have them so much cleared by so many hours after a snowfall. Well, that night I took him to the hospital, the emergency room, holy cow, you couldn't even stand up up out there, you know? So. Um.
That'd be the best part of county shopping.
Yeah.
Hopefully it gets more.
And I did reiterate to him that, you know, Good Thunder is the center of the county.
Yeah, we're smack dab in the middle.
I says, you know, it can't get much better than that.
Every direction they go to.
We're trying to sell our town, is all I can say. So. Um. So what are we gonna do for as far as uh, we're gonna interview that individual or?
That's up to you.
Not me.
What does Mike, well, what does Mike say?
Uh, he says you should interview him.
Okay.
If you guys, he said he doesn't think getting a CDL will be an issue, so.
Well.
And you know whether, I don't know what it takes to get a CDL, so.
Well, it's a class B.
It's not as much as you thought before, right?
Right, you don't have to take that four thousand dollars of training or whatever, to get an A, it's just a B. So I guess, you know what, at this point. We can't look at his thing tonight or just see if he has any mechanical background or nothing. It doesn't, it doesn't say that it has.
No, cause last time Mike said I couldn't show it to you guys until we were interviewing them. I mean, what?
Well, then we better get busy and get Mike here next week too and meet with us.
Have a quick interview.
You wanna try for next week or you wanna try for late this week?
Pardon?
Like this week or early next week?
Whatever it works for, I will be here on a watch. I'd be here later on Thursday.
Okay.
So Thursday, late Friday, that could be. You know, not Wednesday.
I can't do Wednesday either.
Uh. I'll just give them late Thursday, Friday or early next week.
Yeah.
We might as well interview him, you know?
That's right.
Be surprised.
Yep, yep. Okay, so we'll get that in order, um, yard cleanup, I was gonna ask about that, so the letters have been sent out originally?
Yeah.
There was no response to any of it?
Some people got some items removed because they had people coming to pick it up.
Yeah, I did notice, but I don't think there was a lot of improvement.
I think there's a lot of weeds still, I think there's, um.
Lot of solid waste.
Yeah.
So, how do you wanna do the next step? If there's, see, that's where it's trouble, if there's been improvement. We're supposed to.
Yeah, but mowing your lawn every six weeks isn't an improvement.
No. That's not what I'm, yeah, that's not what I'm talking about.
I mean. Our past maintenance, not this last one, but the one before. Sold his property and I don't know if some lawns been mowed three times this year.
It has, but Jim has mowed it.
I mean, there's a height ordinance. So, is that something the sheriffs, if we see a lawn, we tell Ashley to tell the sheriff that eight oh seven Mary, Mary Ellen Lyon needs a lawn mower, how do we?
I don't know.
How do you get that done?
I don't know if they would do that.
Cause it is an ordinance over six inches, we just notify them if they don't take care, we just mow and assess their taxes.
See, that's the problem, is we, we would have to have somebody mow it.
Well.
And then assess it, remember we were doing that? Remember Vernon was doing what, three hundred, wasn't it like a two hundred dollar charge if they mowed or a hundred and fifty or something?
Pretty high, yeah.
Your worry about mowing that stuff, Robert, is you wreck your stuff, because there's stuff laying in the irons, there's chains and cables and hoses and.
Yeah.
I think you said one twenty-five is what we.
But you know what? If they don't take the responsibility and we go in and mow it, you could also stress that we will charge you and any damage is done to the lawn mower, it will be your responsibility.
Things hidden, that one you mowed that we walked through quick, from somebody who was.
Yeah.
They were in the hospital, it was. You look like a little girl, like it was up to your shoulders, like it was awful, I don't know how you even mowed that, but. Especially when it went down the hill.
And uh.
But the solid waste and stuff, I mean.
The first house, when you come in from the east, on the south side of the road, did that get a letter?
The blue house with no waters, that's the one we're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think so.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure she did.
Yeah.
Can we see a copy that sent out?
Uh, no, because I gave you guys copies of the letters, and it started that big hubbub, so we're not doing that anymore. But yes, uh, and then Ron got two lists of the addresses that went out.
We can do copies, we can see copies of like the. The letter itself, but.
No, we're not doing copies of the letter again because of what happened the last time with the picture, we're not doing that anymore.
Okay.
Kennedy.
Who made that decision?
Kennedy sat here and said those shouldn't be in the packets.
So how do we know they're getting followed through then? How do we know that?
You can get a list.
You.
Nothing's happened to any properties, so how do we, us as Scotts know they went out?
There's some letters that were sent out from the city attorney too, and those properties haven't done anything either. So you guys need to give authority to myself and the sheriffs to send. Whoever they're to mow it, or whoever they're to get rid of the debris, or whoever they're to get rid of the trees and whatever the cases, you guys need to give somebody that authority to do that.
Abate it. Or remedy it.
Some way you could do the same thing with the lawn. Say, if you get so many letters and you don't do nothing, you're gonna get charged two hundred and fifty bucks, if you don't do nothing, next time it's five hundred.
Well, yeah, we could do that, we have it in there as a hundred and twenty-five.
I mean, people just blow it off and they don't do nothing, you're driving this town and it looks like shit.
Well, cause even if they go then and say they had a washing machine. And they got the letter for the washing machine, then their grass is too long, but they moved the washing machine, but the grass is still too long. They've made attempts at cleaning up, so then the whole process starts all over, cause I think when the shop was owned by somebody else, I think that was a problem you guys had before me.
Well, the one individual we talked about earlier with the gas pumps in the back, have they ever been issued a letter to get rid of that stuff?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Multiple times up here. You bet some junker don't go steal that.
Yeah, they can steal that instead of a two thousand dollar fan.
Yeah, that'd be better.
I mean, you could look at our policy for mowing, because we should be able to give someone a letter and in seven days, well, they are.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's something to that effect.
We've, in the last group of letters we gave out, we gave them thirty days to come into compliance. When they did not come into compliance, we have not followed through and done anything with any.
Okay.
There's been one property that's got a letter, every few months for a year, Kennedy finally issued the last one, something still hasn't been done.
So then at that point, if it's a. Solid waste thing, that's something that we should. Probably tell them. Kennedy should probably write a letter and say it's gonna be abated and assessed to their taxes.
I think one of these last letters did, but I, for sure, I think. We should just go do yards again, and then I can give you the addresses, but I won't give you the letters.
So the house there, the first one on the left coming in from the east, the west, the blue house, uh, can we mow the boulevard?
The city?
The boulevard is ours.
Yeah.
I would just.
I probably could, there's, there might be some damage to more, cause she was out there digging and doing something, so. I don't know.
Well, then we'll, we'll. Level it out. I mean.
You know, when they dug in the water, there was stuff there, and then she also dug a big hole there next to that.
It's the first thing you see coming in on one or coming in on ten.
And then the body shop, when them two guys were there, they were top notch, and you can see now that that's dwindled.
Yeah.
And so that property owner needs to have a letter stating to get rid of the weeds.
Yeah.
In back, all over, the whole thing is infested with weeds.
In the alleyway.
Alleyway, absolutely, yep. And I know nothing will happen there, so.
But one of the guys is still there, um.
Yeah, I know, but.
He's on his way out, but.
Chances are, he's probably not gonna do it. And the property owner that owns it. We know he won't do it.
He's responsible for it, but the property owner is, so yeah, I'd send him a letter and just.
And that big chunk of cement that's sitting there crooked.
Don't you remember, we can't take that away? That was like to protect that pole.
Yeah, who who came up with that?
I don't know.
I mean.
Don't you remember?
Big cement.
Tony put that in there.
Yeah.
Tony did, yep, well, it's crooked, the blade hit the. Well, they can straighten it out then.
I would, yeah.
It looked pretty, pretty rough.
Yeah, it's terrible.
And I remember you wanted to remove it one other time, and we were like, yeah, let's get rid of that, and then we were told we couldn't.
It, that's in front of the body shop or where's that?
Yeah, there's.
Right by the alley.
Hole there, covered by the three foot weeds.
Yep, it's like. I don't know if it's just shifted more or what it's done.
I think they hit it with a snowplow like Ron said.
I think so.
But again, let's straighten it up, somebody get the weeds knocked down, I mean, it looks like heck.
Yeah.
So. Well, I don't.
It would be very thorough.
I turned the page, I got a couple more things.
Okay.
Okay, Robert, you also added the. Park equipment at the lagoons that you wanted to talk about.
Well. I guess I brought it up before that, you know, some things ought to happen with it, it ain't gonna happen this fall, but we have to put it on the list for next summer.
Yeah, we can't forget about it because we.
No.
I don't see it, cause I don't go down there, so.
So I mean. If we could get an individual that can weld and has extra time, you know, um, this would be the time to work on it. Cause I mean, I do got that extra field up there where we could bring it up there and just set it, so it's only a block away from the city shop and get it clean. Get it ready for next spring, cause uh, there's a lot of little kids in town, and it should be enjoyed.
Where would we put that? Did we discuss if it was gonna go back where the wooden?
Structure was.
But didn't we need this, the church's permission, and then the church wasn't responding, and then?
That's right.
I had a reminder.
Well, we even wrote him a letter and never got a response.
Yeah.
When you talked to them, Sarah, about that one, that. Deacon Cardinal guy was coming or whatever, was that, is she like a point of contact for the church that?
You know what, that's not a bad idea, that maybe she, I'll call her.
Okay, Ron.
She might know.
I put, uh, slow children signs out on Hiller Drive, and we're gonna get, uh, the bus stops out there now, to pick up. Barnard's kids. Hiller Drive.
Okay.
Over there.
Right on that knoll.
So you can't see.
The morning with the sun.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, it's bad.
It's bad.
Coming up, it's horrible.
Already put two signs up there, we're in the shop already, but I gotta, I'm gonna order, uh. Bus stop ahead. And put that on the west side of these houses, so.
And we can do that, right, because there's a bus stop there, like we don't have.
There's gonna be a bus stop, yep.
Yeah.
But there is now, already, yep.
Is there any other ones in town that we need to?
That's what I'm gonna, uh, we don't know where the bus routes are.
So they pick up at the school down here, pick up at the post office, or like in front of the belt, or on that side road on the bell tower. Then they pick up at the city park right across from.
At the little shelter there.
Why do they pick up within a block down there?
I don't know.
That's just what they set up for COVID.
And it's different bus drivers, I think. If I remember right, I think the park and the school are the same bus driver, but the post office is a different bus.
Wow.
And I don't.
And a Hiller Drive bus driver came to the school, so that's.
And I think there's another district that picks kids up too, um.
Lake Crystal picks up in front of City Hall.
Okay.
Wednesday, when the little tykes got to go, there was twenty-one kids boarded that bus over there, front of my house. When the, the little ones got to go, twenty-one, so that's quite a few little kids in that one area. I don't know how many get on down here.
Um, my kids were being picked up at the school, and they said the bus was full, um, they're not being picked up at the school anymore, they get picked up at the post office, and it's. Pretty full.
I'm gonna add a reminder, but I don't know how many.
Um, with the bus stops, when it comes winter time, do we have, we talked about it last winter. About a warm place for them to be, do we have a plan? Especially with all these little kids now.
I was thinking.
School doesn't have one, they don't even provide one for the kids in Mapleton.
I was just thinking about here the other day, that, you know, you buy one of them little movable sheds, you know? I guess I wouldn't mind putting it on my yard, you know, for the winter, so at least they had a nice little spot to go, but again, then you get into. Does somebody have to supervise it?
Yep.
I know.
It'd be, if you're gonna put it on your own property, you definitely'd wanna.
Yeah, it could be on the park property.
Yeah, but even then.
Get electricity from the, the, the little shelter, so you could have lights in it, you know?
Yeah, well, we have that little shelter, do they pick them up near that little shelter, or is it further over?
Um.
They pick them up right in front of my house.
Yeah, cuz kids will wait kind of in the shelter, but then they have to trounce, so it's not gonna get to there, but. We've got that COVID money too, still sitting there, if we decided we wanna buy three heated bus stops or something to put up around.
Cuz you could put it on the bell tower, and then just have them skip the school.
Yeah.
Well, the school will be skipped out itself.
I would think so.
Well, the school's gone.
No, the, this, this, they're not, they're, there's not kids in the.
They pick them up outside, if somebody else owns it, if someone else bought it, they would have to eliminate that.
Yeah.
Unless they just say we're picking up on your street, but Mike had said that he'd give them the corridor, or a warm place too.
Yeah.
Well, if you think about it, if the routes are different due to COVID, then maybe the, we would be justified in using money. From that, and I know that's, I know the routes were switched up, so it wasn't co-mingling so many kids at the time, that was.
Power, if you're gonna put it on that bell tower site, cuz the power that we have there comes from the car wash, you could get power coming down the pole, but I mean. The power to the bell tower comes from the car wash.
I think we should just get our own, there's a pole back there, we should just get our own power to the bell tower.
We've talked about that for years.
Because.
We have events and stuff there.
You could have a decent boxer to pull power for the different areas and events, and. That farmer's market's been pretty big for a few years, you know?
Yeah, and that should be, have some more of its own power, so.
So anyway, I got the stop signs, I'm gonna buy, I'm gonna get a couple more, maybe stop ahead, or.
I'll stop ahead.
I'll stop in ahead, in case we need it someplace, or I can always order them, I guess, but, uh, I'm gonna definitely get one. And, uh, and another one, I had a person stop at my place, and one called me, Ashney, did you get a permit for your gate and fence?
I did, you guys approved it last year.
Is it over a year old?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to look.
For the gate too?
Yep. Cuz I got a pool, and a dangerous dog, I have to have those things.
I'm not arguing with you, all I'm asking is you gotta permit.
Of course I did.
Well, that's what I wanna know.
Of course I did, yeah.
So I know what to tell people.
Yes.
But if it's over a year old, yeah, then it's still good. I'm just.
Already approved, I can fill it back out, you guys already approved all of it, the specs are all the same.
Saying, I'm not arguing, these people stop and ask me, I want an answer for them.
Oh, but.
Well, that's why I'm asking, and all, I'm not getting an answer.
I gave you an answer, yes, there was.
But you don't know if it's over a year old.
Anything else, so Ashney's looking up that.
Multiple properties in town, just, you know, that are doing work on permits that are expired, just so you guys know. These people are doing work without permits, so. Um, so bring it up. Just, just telling you. No, you tell yourself, and tell us, and do something about it, I mean, so the letters gotta be sent to them. That's all there is to it, I mean. Send letters to these people that don't respond to any letters, so what's the one to send them? You gotta go around and talk to them. What's been done now without a permit? Grade elevation changes.
Pardon?
Changing elevations, changing grades, moving dirt. I removed a little stain wall, it was big, and I had to get a permit from the city for doing it, or limestone.
Put in a driveway approach too.
There is a permit.
I got a permit, bud. I got a permit for everything.
I didn't see that one either.
You guys approve all the permits you want.